Seeing that, thus, they're going to the corrections officers saying, "It's cold, it's cold, it's cold." And then the corrections officers are going to administration saying, "We've got no hot water." So it morphs into all these bigger things. But, the architect's office is getting the engineer and they are working on a solution to get that done. I mean, if we have to do something to get hotter water down there all the time, then we just have to do it. I mean, it's ridiculous that we keep having these issues come up like that.
So...
But I'm also taking it upon myself, I will be emailing Pete, the sheriff, Dale, and Bob, every Tuesday before our Thursday meeting and reminding them to come. Because they don't come, and then when they're there and we go through it at the very end and say, "What are your outstanding issues?", they never speak up and they never say anything.
Well, that's strange.
And they have to start doing that.
They're not there?
Pardon?
They're not at the meeting?
Oh, last meeting, I called. We're, I'm sitting there with our architect, the Granger people, me and Shannon. And I'm like, "What are you doing there?"
Nobody else is there.
So I called the sheriff's dispatch and I said, "Could you give me the sheriff, Dale, Pete, or Bob Hayes?"
Anybody.
So the next thing that I realized was Dale came on the phone and he said, "Hello", and I didn't recognize his voice, and I'm going, "Who am I talking to? Is this Joanne?", he goes, "Joanne, it's Dale." And I said, "Well, are you coming to the construction in jail?", I didn't know there was one. I get the invitation, it's a standard thing.
Is it a time that's bad for them? I mean, should it be shifted?
You know, it's the same time we've always had them.
What time?
Two o'clock. And so Dale said, he goes, oh, he goes, "Yeah", he goes, "I can come", he goes, "I'll be right there", and I said, "Okay." So he came and he brought Sergeant Morgunster from the jail with him, which was wonderful, because we finally got to put a face there. And it was a lovely dialogue between things that needed to happen, because Dale asked the question. He said, "Well, when are you guys gonna paint the jail portion?", and they said, "Now, understand, we're only touching the pieces that are getting renovated. We're not touching the whole jail."
Yeah.
And he said, "Well", and goes, "Well, that won't be a problem", he says, "We can have trustees paint, we have them paint all the time." So that got, if that was on a list, that got that settled, they're gonna have trustees do that kinda thing. Well, then pretty soon the sheriff walks in. And he said, "I'm sorry", he goes, "I was working on some court cases or whatever", and he was there, um, basically listening. And then, at the very end, when we went around and asked, "Are there issues?",
Pretty public comment.
There wasn't. So...
Well, you know, Joanne, we hear that there's a lot of issues.
I know, I know. And I said, "I'd love to know what they are myself", that's why I keep asking for the list, and it's like, "Well..."
The famous list.
So, so just to verify, there is water there?
Oh, yeah.
It's just not warm enough?
Correct. Now, yes.
Okay.
And, that, if they could run hot water more often out there, or to that particular pod, if they could, they, they would realize hotter water. But again, like Shannon said, she goes, "Well, that would cause somebody to stand in the showers and keep, you know..."
And wasting water.
Well, then, then that's what she said, she goes, "Now that they put a new meter for water resources on there", she said, "Our water consumption's gonna go up anyway." So, yeah.
There's gotta be another fix to that.
That's why, that's why somewhere they've got to push the loop down there first, and do the other sections last, or something.
Because I, I don't think, you know, Sabrina, you asked about hot water, I don't think they've ever said, "There's no water", they've always said, "There's no hot water", to me, anyway.
Yeah, it's not, well, and like I said, is it because it's not hot enough?
That's what it is, I'm sure, Joanne.
Yeah, and that's why I said, what, and I told the architect, I said, "Get your engineer. If it's a flaw that they did, they need to fix it."
So is there a meeting set up with, for us?
To my knowledge, well, the last communication that I sent was, I said, "If you could give us the list, we, we'd like to look at it before, and maybe we could come out there Friday", but then nobody else answered, so...
Okay.
I'm assuming not, 'cause nobody gave a time or anything.
I'm wondering if there's a list.
Pardon?
I'm wondering if there is a list.
I don't think there is.
I, you know...
It was there yesterday.
I can't tell you, 'cause I don't know.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
But, okay, so...
And so, and so we have, I have another construction meeting next Thursday, 'cause there are, you know, twice a month. And my plan is to make sure everybody's there, and at that meeting, I will say, if, if, when we go around the table and somebody says, "I don't have anything", I will say, "No, there are issues out there and we need to bring them to the forefront." Come on.
And so, to sort of clarify, there was a hot water tank that was damaged, and they're waiting. Is that gonna have any impact?
That has, that has no effect on it, because this tank that's coming in is only for backup purposes. Right now, everything that was originally at the site is more than enough to handle the hot water. The tank that got damaged is, was only gonna be for redundancy, as a backup, in case any of those failed, and they've never failed. So, and that's coming Monday to be put in, the, the replacement.
Yeah.
'Cause when they took it off the, um, the truck, the riggers dropped it and they smashed it. And I said, "We're not paying for a smashed one", because we want brand new. So, yeah.
Okay, hopefully we can get this resolved, because they're not able to take showers out there.
Well, and that's the other thing I thought about, was, I'm sure there could be areas, you know, I think they have showers back in the medical. Escort them up there, let them take showers, come on. You know, but you have, you gotta have to wanna work to solve problems, and I don't always get that.
'Cause I said, "Well, can't you move them?", and it was a manpower thing.
Yeah, that's what I said, I, you know, I, I try not to be caustic, I try to offer, you know, the best suggestions that I can, they're just not always welcomed, I guess.
Well, good, I'm glad.
Well...
So many thanks, Joanne. Thanks so much.
That's all right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me know if there's anything else.
Okay.
All right.
No public comment?
No.
No, okay.
Todd, did you have that resolution or whatever you needed us to, is there something you needed us to sign?
Did you copy the four, or do I need to bring them?
I did.
All four?
'Cause I thought you had to have that signed, and...
Oh, we did that, we got that.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, you got it, okay.
Yeah.
Bye.
We need to truly signature this, the official copy.
Okay.
They're certified. It's ready to go for you to pass the second one.
Okay.
We don't have to sign resolutions?
No.
No, the clerk has to sign it, it's the copy that you passed. So I guess, before we get to part, would you mind passing the add-ons?
They need passed, like, right now?
Not right now, do you wanna do them later?
Well, we don't really do them later, I just wanna look.
Yeah, they'll just need reds.
I'm a little discombobulated.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah. So Todd, just to that end, can you go over that for us? So we have...
The additions?
Yeah.
So the additions, three of them were related to WIC. We finally got our final reimbursement from the state, that's what we've been waiting for. Um, we were actually under the assumption, we weren't gonna be able to close it this year, but that reimbursement just came in, and so these resolutions, basically, they're, the fund is short, which we knew it was gonna be, because WIC doesn't cover one-time payouts, which their vacations and whatnot amount to. So that eleven thousand dollars, um, is the transfer of what wasn't covered by the grant. Um, and then we had done a cash advance, because the state only reimburses. Now that the fund is done and the program is solved, we have three hundred fifty thousand now sitting in that fund, once we do the transfer, and so we need to return that back to the general fund. And then, once that happens, there is no more need for that fund, and so we will close it.
Okay.
So that's the first three. And then the second one, I don't know if you recall, but I think three weeks ago, we did a cash advance to the debt fund, so that we could pay debt. Um, the court just sent over their order allowing for transfer of funds from their project fund, that's the Kent Municipal Courthouse Fund, to the debt fund, that's the five hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred twenty-one.
Wait, we lived past WIC, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is...
So then this is the second email that I sent, a transfer, it's from one-one-two-six and four-zero-one-seven to three-zero-one-three.
Okay, the five hundred and seventy thousand?
Judges, the Kent Municipal Judges, they put that special fee on.
Mm-hmm.
This is their transferring of money from that fund to the debt fund, to cover their portion of that debt.
Okay, gotcha. See, on, on the WIC one, there seems to be two, three hundred and fifty thousand.
What's that last one, uh, the three fifty?
Oh, there should just be a return.
There's, there's, this one is three hundred and fifty.
Which is a cash advance and then a transfer?
The cash advance return, oh, the transfer should be for eleven, yeah, that last one, it does not need done, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah.
So the...
Oh, wait, this is...
No, transfer out, transfer in.
Oh, this is the, this isn't, this is worker comp.
Okay.
It's the same amount? It's the same amount.
That's just an irony that has, it's a physical like...
It's cash, too.
This is funding your twenty-twenty workers' comp fund.
Okay.
We have to pay the worker comp bill, this is the bill that needs to go out by the end of next week.
And it just happens to be also three hundred and fifty?
The bill is actually three hundred and four thousand, and you have some salary that will hit that fund at the beginning of the year, and so that's why we're doing three hundred fifty to cover that salary. What happens is every payroll, the money pays into this fund, but, um, it builds up slowly, so we need a little bit of a cushion.
Okay, so it does need passed?
So this one, I'm sorry, I forgot the...
It's funny that they're both three fifty, right, in a row?
Yeah.
In a row, okay, got it.
Yeah.
And then this one is the municipal court one. And then we have the consent, R eight, it has R nine, amendment to the non-general and amendment to the general fund. Consent, what's on the consent agenda, right?
Those can be passed as the consent of the budget amendments.
Okay.
And that there was a rule.
Wait, is it different than the ones that are in our packet then? Because we have amendment to general fund, amendment to, these are eight and nine, are these just...
Those are what's in your packet, or, you know...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We just don't have, got it, okay. So these don't need passed separately?
No, those are in the consent agenda.
Okay, so I'm gonna combine that, so really, we have two add-ons then? Well, actually, we have three.
No, five.
Well, we have three part add-ons.
Five add-ons.
Three for WIC, one for worker comp, and one for the debt.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, three for WIC, one for workers' comp, and then...
And a debt transfer for the municipal court.
I was looking at agenda one and agenda two. Okay.
Okay. Do you have any questions on the consent agenda, or should we go?
Maybe we can see, I don't think so. If I do, I'll ask before we pass it.
Okay. Um, I wanted to touch briefly, and Chris apologized, he can't make it, I hope he'll be here as well, but, the public record requests in particular that are relating to the jail, it, it's a little chaotic up here at times...
You're kidding.
With these people, um, we're now getting to the point, the sheriff wants everything that we gave to this person, this person wants everything that we gave to that person.
Oh.
That person says, "Well, I know you guys have this document, I handed it to blah, blah, blah", and we don't know whether they really did hand it to you or not. I guess, one of my first impressions is, a lot of these documents aren't even documents that should have become part of the commissioner's office business. They would not normally be a public record of our office. They don't document your activities, they're actually documenting the sheriff's activities. When they were given to you and you forwarded them along, then that did become part of your business. But, I guess the question that we need answered is, which of these really are our documents? Which of them do you want us passing around and responding to people? Versus which of these do we just need to turn and say, "You know what? We don't have the public document that you're describing, it's either the sheriff's or someone else's". Like I said, right now, we're getting, you know, "I want what you gave them, I want what you gave them", um, there's rumors, "I heard they have this", um, and we don't honestly know, because we haven't sat down with the commissioners to see what each of you have been given individually. So, I, I think there needs to be a little bit more of a solution there, so that, you know, when Amy and Julie get these people at the counter, they, they have a more coherent answer to give, rather than just staring like you're in the headlights, not, you know, not knowing whether you did get a document or not, not knowing whether we're passing one or not. Chris responded via email now that he wants to review them all, all the requests beforehand, because now we do have a lawsuit. So we'll start doing that, but, like I said, a lot of these aren't even our records. And I'll give you an example, we have a medical record, that if you believe the lady who handed it to us, she didn't even come by it appropriately. It's a medical document that we absolutely shouldn't be passing along, yet now it's, in the file, it's having been given to us as a public record. Those are all questions that I think need better answered, um, before we begin handing this stuff out. On the other hand, you have to understand, if you tell people we don't have the public record they're requesting, and there's a difference between a record and a public record, you're gonna get backlash for that. So, we wanted to bring it to your attention, we understand there's gonna be lawsuits, we understand the possibility that we get called. Um, I had a reporter come Friday, he wanted a report, I know it's at the jail. To be honest, I wasn't sure if we had gotten a copy passed through. I told him it was at the jail, he left, but I spent another three hours between Friday and Monday, making sure we really didn't get a copy of it and had it stored in one of our files somewhere. So that's kinda the chaos that's coming, is we don't know what records are flowing. I just wanna make you that aware of that, there isn't a solution that I need to be worried about, but you guys may wanna sit down with Amy and better coordinate what we have, what we don't have, and sit down with Chris and decide, what is our responsibility to pass on versus what is not a record of this office that we can respond to? And the response is, we don't have a public record of that description. And that is an accurate statement, if that is indeed the case.
So what you're saying is, is they're, they're doing all the public records requests here, instead of maybe going to the jail and asking for it? So our staff is having to coordinate with the jail to get the information to...
Well, and then what's happening is, when someone does get a report, they're handing it to either you or to your staff, and all of a sudden now, we do have it in our possession, even though it's not our public record.
Yeah.
It's a document that we have, to be nice, I guess you could say, we were trying to help people, but now people are coming to expect it from us, and we're starting to get yelled at for you're trying to hide something. We're not trying to hide anything, but literally, the medical records, everything, you don't get copies of those, we don't have them in this office.
We can't give those medical records out.
Redacted ones can be, the problem is, it's not your record to redact to begin with.
Okay, I got you.
So, I just think we need to get coordinated, by we, I mean you and Amy in particular, and...
Chris.
And these, these stories that, "Well, I gave so-and-so a copy, so I know you have it", we just need to get some of that cleared out, that, we need to come together and say, "This is everything that we have", and make sure, like I said, that way when people come to the counter, your staff can be more confident and provide the answers. Uh, right now, we're a little panicked, we're kinda looking around, you know, "Well, I don't know if they have it or not", kind of a thing. So, I just wanna bring that to your attention.
Okay.
If I may say something? I, uh, when I worked in NASA, we had a lot of stuff about public records. One of the things they said was, "A copy of a record is not a record." So, if you've got copies of this stuff, it's not a record.
The official location is the record.
It's the record.
Like, if it's a record of the sheriff, that's the record.
Okay.
And that's where, I'm saying a record versus a public record, your answer can correctly be, "We don't have a public record",
Okay.
even though it may be in your possession. Now, when it becomes a part of your activity, meaning you've done something with it, you've acted on it, then maybe it is, does become, but that's what we need to sort out. Again, I'm not here to help with that, Chris, Chris will have to do that. But I think the three of you all need to sit down with him and say, you know, "Here's where we're at", so that we do know what's a record of this office, what's a record of another office, so that we can refer people to that accurately. And then, the other question is, where are you supposed to send these people? Where, we should not be taking these complaints and forwarding them ourselves. We should be able to direct the public, though, to say, "When you have a concern, here's where you go." You know, we don't wanna leave them high and dry, but to say, "Well, we'll take that and forward it alone", not that you can't, but, I think a better answer would be to get to them, "Here's where you should go with your information."
Yeah.
That way, we aren't involved, we aren't, you know, we're becoming the middleman and it's taking up an awful lot of our day for stuff that isn't, isn't our business. And now, like I said, we're, we possibly are gonna be subpoenaed to say what we've done over stuff we've... Never had any interest in doing.
Trying to, yeah, yeah.
All right. Back to the budget, uh, we were gonna talk about...
Can I just put a pin in that? Can we put, let's ask Chris to come in next week and talk to us about managing these public records?
Yeah, because, I was gonna say, it's sooner or later, I don't know. Our calendar's pretty full for the nineteenth, but I know we did set aside the twentieth for the manaway thing, so maybe that's wrong, 'cause we need Amy to be here.
She'll be here on the nineteenth, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
It looks like we have time on the nineteenth.
Do we have time on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
We do, I don't know if Brinfield got there, Brinfield's gonna come on the nineteenth as well. But they, they said it was gonna be a short presentation.
Okay.
So keep that in mind, too.
What's that?
For the, um, the school, the school sent you a letter saying they wanted you to hold off on acting on the...
CRA.
CRA, that's what I can think of. Um, I believe they're coming to present to you additional information now regarding that. But they wanted to get in, 'cause the school board president, her field, her term ends at the thirty-first, and she wants to come in to do it before she leaves office.
Okay, so she's the one that's coming in?
Yeah, her along with the trustees, I believe, are our trustee.
That is not on our calendar.
No, they indicated at a meeting.
They still had to call, and they told them to call you. Did Nick back call you yesterday, Julie?
Hmm.
Okay, so they still have a gun.
We don't have to, I mean, if it's last, I think they would like to, because the school board president is leaving. Um, to the twenty-twenty budget, um, the, the most pressing issue is employee raises. If you are ready to make a decision on that, I can modify the budgets and have that ready for the nineteenth. Um, the other option is that we put the budgets out without a raise and indicate that you will still be discussing that into January, I don't know what your preference is.
Well, Todd, you sent us the information on what each percent cost. What is your recommendation with all the moving pieces and parts that we have, that would be comfortable to do?
So, there's a bit of a catch twenty-two, and I don't know if you like my answer, but if you would set the jail aside for a minute and just look at our normal operations.
Yeah.
Typically, what we have done is, we have reviewed the existing year's surplus and use that to pay the future year raises, that way we're...
Yeah.
We have the money. In the past, we had passed a raise, hoping the money would come in, and when a great recession hit, we got cut off guard. So, um, in doing that, there's two things, our sales tax has started coming very, very strong, particularly the last few months, it was doing well before that. There were two, two months in particular where there was a bit of a concern, but we rebounded back, so the sales tax is doing fine. We were hoping to get twenty-two million, we're probably gonna get twenty-two million, one hundred thousand. Um, and that twenty-two million was a good, a good figure, we had only gotten twenty-one and a half the year before that. So, sales tax is going well, interest is still holding strong, despite the, the decrease from the Fed. We don't get a lot of interest anyway, so, it's hard to move nothing, but our interest has stayed where it was. And then, the very, very good news, and your employees do deserve a lot of credit for this, is the health benefits, the fact that you have no increase in costs going into twenty-twenty. That is unheard of from anyone at this point in the healthcare, you know, crisis over the last ten years, et cetera. The fact that you did experience no increase in costs, you know, it's a reflection on Susan and the hard work that she does to get people the information about mail and prescriptions and all this type of thing, but it also speaks volumes, volumes to the fact that your employees are doing it. When you looked at, when Tower Willis came in, um, you have very, very good numbers in terms of participation in those money-saving programs that are offered.
Well, I wanna just comment on that, yesterday, at regional planning, Mayor, Mayor Patrick said that their insurance for the village went up thirty-five percent. Oh, my goodness.
And those figures are not unheard of.
Thirty-five percent.
Eight, eight is the minimum expectation, there are people that are happy if they get eight.
Oh, my goodness.
So, I guess the point of all that is, your employees have worked hard to do that, I believe they should possibly share in that good fortune, rather than all going to a specific area. So without the jail aspect, I probably would have recommended to you two and a quarter to two and a half percent that your employees get. Now, a caveat is, when we add the jail opening, we're adding fifteen employees, we now have this sales tax money that's going to dry up, and we have a million dollars' worth of employees there. And so the question becomes, how much...
Except that we heard last week that we don't, on, on the patrol.
What?
Last week, the sheriff is not, has not expanded, like, we've talked about with the sales tax...
Money-wise, we expanded.
Those patrol.
Whether it's service-wise they provided, but we're spending four hundred and twenty-five thousand out of that fund for something. And that's, that's for sure.
Okay, I, I, but what I'm saying is, is did that go into the, 'cause he said that he did not expand his road patrol at that level, that we have talked about with the sales tax.
But he has the money.
I, I can't argue as to how his operations have changed. I can tell you that two years ago, three years ago, now it's the third year, he was given an additional four hundred thousand to hire people with, and he did hire people with that. And that additional four hundred did not take away from his regular portion, it was on top of it.
Yeah. I mean, does he end the year with, like, with...
With a surplus?
No, you're not gonna say that.
Well, he has all these budgeted positions that we've given him money for, and then, when he comes in and gives us the staff list, it's not, it doesn't line up.
This year, for the first time, they will have extra, but that's only because you gave them six hundred thousand...
And they weren't able to...
For half a year worth of expenses, and they haven't been able to fill it, and it's only gonna be around eighty thousand dollars extra. Normally, we've set at this point in the year, and had to cover eighty, last year, I think we had to find out that almost a hundred twenty thousand that they had gone over budget on. So, no, they're not returning surpluses, um, from what is being given.
Except that, well, they are actually going this year.
This year, they will, yes.
But it's really because they just haven't hired people?
But that's eighty back on the extra five hundred we were giving, and they still spent all their original budget, so to speak. Uh, so the point of that is, it gets a little fuzzy when you add that additional strain that we had been preparing for, and to be honest, you are in far, far better shape than I think a lot of people expected us to be, in terms of being able to add those labors and take over the, you know, additional food, additional medical, but it is a strain we have to deal with. We talked about the fact that we had planned on using some of that cash balance to help us get by a couple years while we adjust it. I think we're still in the realm of that plan, if you, so that, if you did two and a quarter, two and a half percent for all the employees, it may mean that you need to be much more careful in twenty-twenty, in terms of trying to figure out ways to cut back a little bit. Otherwise, you're gonna have some tougher decisions come twenty-twenty-one. If you went less than that to all your employees, it will help with the jiggle issue, but again, the question becomes, how much are all these employees to help fund this program versus how much do you reward the employees the way they should be? And then figure out what to do with this as a separate entity.
Todd, one thing that I wanna remind that we learned in CCAO was, um, next Friday, I think, we're supposed to get the first, um, check on the internet sales.
And we are excited to see how much that will increase.
Yeah, I'd just be interested to see.
Some rumors say not much, because a lot of the major entities were already collecting anyways, some say it could be significant. I always like to have it at hand before we spend it, but it is exciting that maybe there will be some...
I mean, there is, yeah.
But those are the type of things where maybe that will help. And that's what we were hoping, you know, using some of the cash balance over the next couple years, while we find other revenue sources or while the sales tax builds up. So, you know, in my mind, anything from one and a half to two and a half would be fair to your employees. I think below one and a half, you would, you would have, um, people significantly disappointed based on expectations of how the economy's performing.
What is the poll of this year, for the next year, has it come out? Is it at...
Uh, I wanna say it's finishing right now on two point one, uh, for the year. Um, it may actually come a little bit higher. It, it was actually around two point two by mid-year, but then it slacked off a little bit.
A little bit, yeah. A little bit, yeah. How difficult would it be for you to prepare for next week, three versions? One and a half, two?
Two and a quarter.
One?
Well, actually, I, I don't think we should go one, one and a half. I would start at two, two and a quarter, and two and a half. Just, I think we need to at least do two, if, if we can, at all possible.
I mean, I was just listening to, yeah, Todd, and then one and a half to two and a half range, um, but, I, I, I mean
We could do to, would, I could, it's not a problem, I can bring you as many versions as you want.
Do two, two and a quarter, and two and a half?
I mean, like, have the, have it ready for us to make that decision with all of this stuff.
Yes, that's on schedule. Oh, three resolutions, and you can choose the one that fits.
Okay.
Do you want two, two and a quarter, and two and a half? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Because you're saying that anything below one, the one and a half, it's, I like
I wouldn't go below one and a half, I think
I'm not saying below.
People were expecting that.
I'm just saying one and a half.
Um, you could do one and a half, you could do one and three-quarter, it's up to you guys, I'll, but I can prepare four of them if you want.
Why don't you do one and a half, just in case?
Just, yeah.
One and a half, two, two and a quarter, and two and a half?
Yes.
Uh, we'll do that.
I'm not really willing to go that one and a half right now.
I'm not either. I, I wouldn't go below two. I would like to do, if, if we could, I'd like to do two and a quarter.
Then drop the one and a half.
Well, I, I can, it really isn't that hard, it's paper printed, but, um
It's worth it.
I, but, you can, let me see, if you want. Um, I can do that.
Great.
Um, let me see. Okay, that's the big one. Um, try the next, because they want to know, um, uh, project development board had asked for an additional twenty-five thousand. Are we inclined to that, uh, the additional would take them to seventy-five thousand right now. They have been getting fifty thousand, and that is what the draft currently has in it, is fifty thousand. Are you inclined to increase that? Not increase it or hold off on that decision as well?
Well, I think Kathleen made the point last week that they really haven't told us what they're going to use it for, not been specific. So, I think we hold, in my, in my opinion, is just hold it where it is. Maybe we'll consider it next year if there's something that in the hopes that they need.
And you know what?
Do we wanna indicate we're considering? Do you wanna say you're offering fifty with the option that they can always come to you, should they need more?
Not for this year, no. I mean, I, I think
Leave them at fifty, tell them that's what they do.
I think we'd leave them at fifty, because they still have a hefty, I mean, they have a huge
Now, that'll tell you they need three quarters of a year for guidelines.
I wish we had that. But
Yes.
I mean, and it's not, no discredit to the service that they do, it's just
That organization is a great organization.
I would rather give it to our employees, I mean, we do a lot for the development board, and in return, they do a lot for us, but they still have a pretty hefty carryover, and I would rather give it to, to our employees, if at all possible.
So, I'm hearing, leave it at fifty, leave it at fifty, you're at fifteen, right?
I, of course, wanted to help our employees, I mean, I think that's, you know, unanimous here, but I I, I mean, they're, they do a lot, uh, for a relatively bargain, uh, price, um.
Yeah.
But I agree that when they came in, and I'm the one that said this last week, was that they didn't make a strong case for what they would do with the additional twenty-five thousand. I mean, the, the response was social media
Market, marketing.
Marketing. So, I think that we stay at the fifty K. In the, in the back of our mind, next year, we won't say that, you know, but
We'll have to wait and see.
Could be a possibility.
I think, too, some feedback of like, here's why, you know, and I'm happy to provide that conversationally of just if, if there is a need, the case needs to be a little bit more compelling when we're
Yeah.
When we're talking about it.
Okay. Um, RPC, there had been talk of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I don't honestly know if the details are finalized or not. Um, right now, I think it's around fifty-six thousand that they want.
No, they dropped it to fifty thousand.
Fifty even?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you wanna just outright commit to that, if you'd wanna put that in contingency pending further negotiations or details?
I think we need to get a contingency to see, I definitely want one.
Yeah.
We need to know more about it, but I do think we should set that aside for them.
I do, too, because it also will help with the grant writer, because a lot of times, they ask for a compreh, that the county's comprehensive plan, especially for departments, and we have none. So, I am really strong in that I would like to see that funded for next year, and that, and he did come down to the fifty thousand, and the board was all in favor of that, and they are reconsidering our TA hours to make it more equitable to the commissioners, since we are the largest contributor.
Well, that's the question, is are those revisions gonna change that fifty, because I don't think we've heard those revisions yet.
No, because they haven't come, they tabled that till next year, so I would plan on the fifty.
So, I'm hearing, put it in contingency till we get the detail?
Yeah.
You want contingency as well? We won't commit to them, but we'll set it aside in case you decide next year.
Yeah, because I, I'm thinking we're, we really need to do it, and I think it's gonna also get us a bigger bang for a buck for the grant writer if that helps in decision-making for some of the grants they apply for.
Okay.
Kathleen, you do have anything on RPC? No, what they're saying sounds good.
Okay. Um, the, the only other change I'd like to make you aware of, our, our phone bills did go up a little bit more than expected, it's not significant, but I will be altering the phone amounts as well.
Well, that's something we have to pay, right?
You're stuck with that, I just wanted you to be aware of that number. Otherwise, the only numbers are gonna change from what I gave you are the salaries, benefits, and then the telephones. Um, changes to the commissioner's budgets, um, I don't know if you're prepared to want to put a specific amount, if you want something held in contingency, or if you're okay with your budgets as they currently are.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
The changes to the commissioner's budget, you had asked me for some additional information, which I did email you. The question would be, are you, do you want a specific amount added to one of your budgets, in particular commissioner's office budget? Do you want to have something held in contingency for further consideration?
Of the administrator.
Or are you satisfied with your budgets as they are, and you don't need any additions?
That's true, thinking about it.
About the administrator, that's the only other thing, and the only other thing I question is, um, we had talked about adding a maintenance person to the jail. Is, did we put that, because that wasn't a
Well, Joanne and I did talk. You, there is definitely strong interest. There, I believe that what should happen is you should put that money in Joanne's budget if you want it to happen.
But Joanne doesn't want it, that maintenance person.
You should tell the sheriff that you would like for him to hire a maintenance person and bill Joanne. That way, the money will be insured for going towards maintenance.
And not something else?
Otherwise, you know, and we've done this, it's part of why we have private security in this building. The sheriff gets money, then when you cut, those are the things he cuts, and then, now you don't have that.
Yeah, and you don't have the money.
So, if what you literally want is a maintenance person in the jail, if you gave the sheriff money right now and not towards his other requests, he could use the money for his other requests, and if that's his priority, it wouldn't be all that. I mean, he told you that's what he needs to do. So, if you had the money in Joanne's budget as the maintenance budget, but you ask the sheriff to hire and direct a person so that he has control over what that person does, and then he can bill, very similar to, you know, the sheriff hired an environmental compliance office, and he bills bill for that work.
Oh.
He, he hired the people that escort child services employees, and he bills for that work. So, it's not unheard of that the sheriff's office bills to various departments for that specific type of work. I think that would work the best way in ensuring that there is a maintenance worker out there for not only next year, but for future years.
But I got a question, though, because with them putting it under the sheriff out there, would they be still working with our maintenance people to do, like, for supplies and stuff? Are we duplicating efforts and stuff? Are we still gonna be able to
Yeah, that will have to be worked out between Joanne.
Or we're gonna charge them? I mean, that's the only thing, is I, I, I hate to do
At the end of the day, that's all general fund, regardless of who's buying it.
I know.
Um, my guess would be our maintenance crew would work with that person in providing them, you know, if they needed a particular tool or something they didn't have, we wouldn't need to go buy the new one. Um, the idea of having it under sheriff's direction was that that person could move into the jail more freely than their current workers.
Okay.
Um, that type of thing. Um, there's still the option, I think, of a private company, but part of the nightmare is when the toilet gets clogged at midnight.
And then we pay
Um, you know, if you pay someone from eight to four, they could sit twiddling their thumbs, chances are they won't, there's a lot to be done out there. But then something happens at midnight, now that becomes the overtime, whereas if you hire a private company, you may have to wait ten minutes, but they come out any time of day, but anyway, um, I believe it was around sixty-five thousand to hire an employee of that level, plus the benefits associated with it.
Plus benefits, right?
That sixty-five includes that.
Oh, sixty-five includes that.
Yeah, they would make around forty, and then we always plan on at least twelve thousand if they choose a family plan. If they choose single, we save.
Okay.
I will put that in Joanne's maintenance budget for now.
Yeah.
And then we can work on how to get the information to sheriff. No, that was not in anywhere, because we still have to talk about it.
Well, that kind of disappeared after we approved it.
Yeah.
Or what?
Yeah. Um, which brings up, then, the other departments and office holders. Um, are we altering the budgets for the sheriff based on his presentation, or are we still leaving it as it was?
I think we're leaving it as it was.
Okay. And, um, any other office holders? I know Brian had asked to go to midpoint, Judge DeLato had asked to get some employees to midpoint. Are you satisfied with leaving those budgets without those increases as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I know you just talked to Joanne, is there any additional money I need to set aside for the motor pool? RPC will still wait till that bid comes out. Uh, Motor Pool Record Center in particular, did she have a bid for Iron Mountain?
Record Center, there's a lot to that, we'll talk extensively about that.
I, I had already planned on putting money in contingency for just a case on that, uh, three hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Um, so I will, I will set that aside in there.
Yeah, I don't know that you need to do that. I, I feel like that is not close.
Not gonna happen?
Well, it's also
Not close to that, I should say that next year.
Yeah, not close to happening, and I think there's a lot of moving parts revenue-wise. If there's a sale, I, I don't know. I think we wanna do it where we're not expending a huge amount of money, so we're far away from it, and I don't think we're thinking about it as a big cost.
Getting all the elected officials on board and getting their staff out there.
That's not gonna happen.
I, I'm telling you, we're probably looking at it nine months to a year out, I mean, even
Yes, if you expect the county to do all the work, which I, which could be a nightmare, I will tell you that. If you are gonna move that records facility, it would behoove you to hire a company to help you do it.
And we were saying about cer- certain piles and boxes.
Certain things that our people have to do, Todd, the way they're
Well, so, and I'll just give you some quick examples, like the courts, when I was out there, the courts have boxes labeled, you know, twenty sixteen cases, one through nine hundred, twenty sixteen cases, nine hundred and one to a thousand. Those boxes are ready to go, all that needs to happen is someone move them into the proper receptacle, and then one court employee to verify, yes, that really is what's in the box. That can happen quickly. You guys have almost a hundred and fifty boxes out there, probably, that are horribly labeled, and when you open them up, they're full of a bunch of garbage, not garbage, a bunch of stuff that we wouldn't know.
Can we not go back into Record Center? Do we?
What?
Because this is like a rabbit hole that we just spent a ton of time talking about. But wouldn't one of our employees have to be out there to say what's in that box? We can't get somebody off the street.
My recommendation is that stuff you get in here and start going through, because a lot of that stuff is just trash that needs thrown away. It isn't a record that we need to keep, it isn't a record that we need to be aware of. If you're gonna go to Iron Mountain, you have to have a list saying, you know, the two thousand sixteen agenda from May second is in fact twelve.
Yeah.
And they, they have to be labeled to that level. Um, now, those type of things, yes, a private company can come in, and they can go through our electronic files, and they can print, and they can organize, and they can do that type of stuff.
We need to talk to Joanne, Todd, seriously.
Well, that's what I said when, when we were talking about, we need to have Todd in here, because this is gonna
I didn't mean it like that, Todd, I just meant like, oh my god, we already just had one.
No, I know, it's Yeah, it, you can take three years and still not be done if all county work is gonna be involved, or you can spend some money. But you're gonna spend money.
So, you're thinking we could do this within a, I mean, start with a year, we need that one fifty, set aside?
To be honest I think you could. Um, again, your records need done regardless of whether they stay out there or not. I mean, right now, those might as well be in the garbage, because we don't know what's in them.
Well, I think that's an o- uh, over I mean, I think some, some stuff's good out there, some stuff is problematic.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's also gonna be on each individual elected official that has records out there to store, how they want to
Like, is it, some are very well labeled, the, the auditor's invoices. Those boxes are already very well labeled. If you ask for invoice from, you know, blah, 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 from blah, blah, blah date, they would know exactly what box it's in.
I think our current stuff is in good shape, it's, some of our older stuff, which is what we talked about.
Yeah. There was some old sub package, you know.
With Joanne, at like
But those, to be honest, those, and here's the thing, hire, hire two guys in the truck or three guys in the truck, and have them bring all those boxes, stick in Joanne's office, and then let your staff, well, in this office, I mean, everybody can get one, and let your staff go through them. But to expect Glenn to get them all out here, you know, again, that's gonna take him a few weeks to move them. Those are the options they can have, but we can talk about that later. Um, so I, I won't put anything
I don't think so, Todd.
Aside from any of those objects.
No, not at this point, I mean, there's a, there's a lot to do.
Yes, I will say, though, that a lot gets done even slower if you don't begin.
Yes.
Well, that's what I said, Todd, if we don't start, it's only gonna get worse up.
Mickey was saying that, right now.
It's only gonna get worse up.
Even if we don't decide not to sell it, I think we still need to have some kind of purge out there, because we've got some departments with records fifty years, and it's not required.
Well, you know, a lot of those boxes, I talked about the hundred fifty, you have dead new ones in, but she left. I mean, there is no there is no document that I can go to and say, oh, yeah, that's out there, when people ask if we have, and I'm like, I don't know if we should go out there and look or not.
Todd, do you have anything else? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm just gonna be at a board meeting at noon at the hospital, so I, I gotta scurry.
Can we do the consent, and these resolutions will come back?
Oh, yeah.
For Kelly Jo, is that okay?
Yeah.
I just wanna, there's a lot of, I just wanna look at them, yeah. Thank you.
She's gonna think about purging boxes. Joanne's office, boxes.
Yeah, just, just have a two-minute trip to Joanne's office. I thought you meant like in her real office.
Okay, recess.
Recession, yes, yes. Let's recess until Kelly Jo comes back up here, which will be, I think, after.
Monday.
Yeah.
If she comes up earlier as well?
Oh, I'm going, I'm on at twelve thirty, right?
I won't be back earlier than that, because I got a board meeting, so I'm on
What is the thing this afternoon with Kelly Jo?
It's just to approve the resolution for that levy.
Oh, okay.
It's like a second step that she needed, but we didn't do her stuff.
But that's it.
Already, and then they can, then we'll do the consent. Okay. I actually, when I looked at the agenda, I saw the afternoon and not the morning meeting, so I thought, okay, that's why I'm meeting with them in the afternoon about their, um, holiday, yeah. And plus, that was the time that was available to photographer, so.
Sure can get an photographer.
Yeah, so, so now I'm in Ramona until late three, so.
She might know what to adjust.
Yeah, well, I have
Is there one of those things to do?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'll let them get lunch out of the way, so, I was like, a half hour early, it's gonna hold them, so. All right. There's also a lot of stuff over here.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying, Merry Christmas.
You know what, I'll probably sign some of that now, because I've got a two o'clock also left.
Yeah, I'm here, too, I just wanted to look over all these things one more